The Acton Town Council is holding a protest meeting today, which is the only way the county will allow them to gather together. Following rules, everyone is seated or standing six feet apart, and less than 100 people present. So they're gathered here at Acton Park, under the covered pavilion where the tables are. And they have a limited agenda since they are here outside and once it gets dark, they have to go. So hopefully, they can get everything done in the next hour or two.
We're going to have this little protest meeting to just kind of talk about some things that we want on the county. We don't have our name, Patrick. I'm Jeremiah One, I'm the president.
Tom Costin, vice president.
Campbell, church professor.
Jackie Ears, the corresponding secretary.
And, uh...
Secretary.
Yes. So we're going to go through some of the big things that have been kind of floating around that we can talk about and discuss. We need an input from the community on what we want to give back to communities. This is what we have to do. They're just continuing to ramor out things through. So it's not really fair to have things that impact the community with no input from the community. So that's why we thought we'd get an opportunity here to gather some input so we can pass that on and give them some stuff to chew on. So Jackie, you want to start out with a little bit of feeling about Metro proposing?
Sure.
Double the train trips through Acton.
Now, I don't need my megaphone, right? I just... About two months ago, we were contacted by Metro and we were told that they are going forward with the plan to double the train routes along MetroLink through the unit, and also shift the freight system around. So that would be, I think it's up to 40 trips a day is what they have approved funding for. And they told us that they... That's just for Metro. They told us that they would be starting the environmental outreach part of the program next month, which is very soon. And so we have told them that the residents of Acton don't have... Many of them don't have good internet. Zoom meetings for me, I have good internet. I have it. It's a heck of a time to Zoom meetings when I deal with the school board meetings and other things. So we have a unique situation here. If they're not going to convene a meeting, then they need to not move forward on the environmental review until they can find a way to work with our community. And the last... There was a conference call about two weeks ago and we were told that they would figure a way around. They had no idea how to deal with the problem here, but they would figure out a way. And I have not a lot of faith that that's going to happen. But I'm also realistic in that I have a concern that they're going to walk forward anyway with this environmental review next month that we will not really be able to practice for. So one of the things that I wanted to protest is our inability to comment on this project and to kick around some ideas that if we as a community want to get behind, that we really need to step in over starting in about two weeks. So I don't think realistically speaking, we'd be able to stop their doubling of the routes. The momentum's too great. There are all kinds of things going on that would prevent us from stopping that. But I do believe that if we band together and we insist on quiet zones at every single crossing, that would require them to put in certain infrastructure. It would require them to participate in a process with the Federal Railway Administration. But if they did that, then there would no longer be any more train whistles going through at 3:00 AM at each of the cross...
And that twice off.
Yes, yes, twice off. So there would be Bootlegger, Crown Valley, Aliso... And I miss one. But in all... So we would need to insist on that. I, at the last meeting, I brought it right and I said, "We're going there. This is what's going to happen." And they balked. "Oh, well, we don't know if we can put in as mitigation." And I said, "You don't understand. We're bringing to the community and we're going to find out what they think about it. If that's what they want, the music community are going to push forward on that." So there are things that are available to us, for us to fight for, to help protect us from the noise impacts of this project. But we just... I mean, we brought it up. What do you guys think?
Wasn't it a couple of years ago that a petition went around that decided we were already annoyed and... And I live over in Crown Valley. With the wind blowing right, sometimes I hear the whistle. But that's big. But over here, we've got Soladad, Crown Valley, Bootlegger, and Westside. Well, we still have a lot of whistles coming from here. A lot of people use that petition as precedent to say that we were... We didn't want it then, and we don't want it now.
I agree. And Rob Peter, who's on the town council, spearheaded that effort. He did a great job. He had a lot of information on it. And that's sort of how we learn about the quiet zones option. So... Anyways, no...
No, but you're not trying to rob it. I'll meet you at the rob. I think it's a great place to start a petition again with an update. Sure. Surely, I think this is a running start. Because if that's a precedent, well, look at that. It established it was two great quiet zones in existing places. Then this is still going to happen. So it wasn't anything... All this is fact, and it's done with trips. It's still giving the same problem just twice as often.
Right, exactly. So it's a supplementary argument. So if you wouldn't mind dropping a line to the town council email and saying, "Hey, we want this." That would be helpful also. And the email address is ATTC@acton.com.
So I will drop a line in my...
There's added benefits to the quiet zones too because of a more secure infrastructure. That may be makes it safer for vehicles and batteries and everything else.
I don't remember, but I think the petition went out on the comment box. Somebody said that they didn't want it at night because people were sleeping. And I think I did comment, I did keep a comment like that, but it doesn't matter what time of the day it is because some people work nights and some people work days. So we don't want anyone.
Also, I think the ding 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 is quieter than the horn.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, do the crossings still ding? I don't think so.
Well, this is what we have to find out. It's going to be something we find out.
I can understand that I'm on Sierra Highway where it curves around and you turn left on Avenue O. And there's that crossing there. And I've heard that one's ding.
So the quiet zones, are they just hard rail?
They're double protected, so both sides, cars come down.
Right now, there's just one on in each direction.
Because I know the ones like in the city, at least during the day, when the rails are down and they have the LED lighting like saying, "Hey, train's coming." You know, the wind, you know, nothing ahead.
So the difference is those are not double projected. If you've been on Anaheim or the county, they don't blow the horn. But the city, it's one side or the other side. This is the total...
So there's four arms.
Yeah, they're bit the hour light. Yeah, exactly. So they're completely quiet. You could not go through. And that's why they say that they don't need to blow the horn because... Now, that's saying, I believe that the contractor still has the opportunity. Well, I believe that the contractor still has the opportunity to blow the horn if they see something obviously that drives.
For a safe, you just take a horn, kids, and they're not...
But I'd be honest with you. I think it's still going to be an uphill battle because even when I threw that out, they were like, "Oh, well, we've got to deal with the FRA." Well, they'll do that after the project. I said, "No, you don't understand. You may not approve the doubling or even one more trip a day until the facilities are in place and the FRA is bought off on us."
Can you bring up the safety issue of like just the fact that if there is an accident that happens, the response time to get medical attention to any of the crossings is not like it's in somewhere else? Just, you know, had abundance of safety for the public, having those crossings there to prevent them from happening in the first place, you know, could be a liability to them.
Could I ask a huge favor of you? Having a comment like that coming from an actual police officer?
I'll write it up for you.
Great, thanks. Thank you for your service.
I'm not going anywhere because I looked at that circle example. I was like, "Oh, yeah, I'm not being... I sit right here.
Isn't that being writers?
Well, it's not just schedule. It's the freight trains too.
Well, yeah, they did tell us about... They're shifting the freight train schedule, but we have no idea.
What that...
It's going to be more.
She's asking if there's that much demand to double it. Because the trains are packed. No, I mean, there is no population to sustain more of today.
In addition to the quiet zones, could you also request that they try and run the tier four engines? Because they have new engines that are tier four. You'll hear...
The clean, super clean ones?
They are super quiet. We live right off of Soladad Canyon and we can hear the old ones.
You can tell when they're... Which one's coming?
You can tell it's big.
Do you want to write that in to an email?
Could you send an email?
Sure, that'd be great. Just need to know where to send it.
Yeah.
ATC? It's okay. We'll keep saying it. But ATC at Acton Town Council.
Or just Google Acton Town Council, come up, and then there's a comment, a citizen comment or something.
Okay, I'll send it in.
Both the papers too.
I do know that one of the drivers for this whole effort is Green New Deal, which we'll talk a little bit about later and all that. So that's a natural sort of dovetail of the whole issue. Hey, if you're going to double the engines, make sure that your environmental leaders...
And I bear it in mind with the missions and stuff like that too.
Ooh, we love explodes like that.
This is really to be a Green New Deal thing. And they absolutely should be...
Clear everything.
Quiet, yeah. Let's roll the whole... Let's ask the whole...
Exactly.
This comes from a long time ago.
Gathering this stuff is amble to, at least the way it's... We can have proper meetings and whatnot.
That'd be a big long road.
Yeah, we're trying to create...
Yeah, firewall.
Is basically what this is.
Exactly.
Right now, it's just everything's getting rammed through. We're not getting an opportunity to speak. So the more stuff we can throw into the mix and try to gum up the works a little bit to give us a proper ample opportunity to speak about the stuff that's going to affect our community, we want to do it.
Just like Jean's question about why they're doubling or adding 40 more trips for MetroLink.
Because it's... Everybody has to get out of their car and everybody has to get on the train. Or on their bikes, but you guys are wearing your bikes.
We're doing the work.
It just is what it is. I'm not commenting good or bad. It just is. We have to deal with it.
There are times when you wish to get to Acton. It's... So I can understand them trying to make it more convenient for the riders. No, I'm not saying double. But there definitely is room with the ridership we had five or six years ago to run more trains, at least at the peak times.
Well, there's also another part of it.
There is justification for it, I believe, to some extent.
There's another part of it that maybe we'll segue to the next topic. The high-speed rail ridership report came out a few months ago. The town council commented on it. If you looked at it carefully, you saw the high-speed rail does not carry any commuters. Zero commuters. Now, they sold it to come down to 14, not the five, because they said they needed a way to get from Crown Valley to Annalow Valley down to LA. So they sold it for our buy-in on our... Not my buy-in. But LA and buying was as a commuter option. But if you look at the ridership numbers, it will not be carrying any commuters.
And it's just another long list of things that you want to...
Yes, and that's why this is... I think this is sort of a stopgap because we stepped into that pretty hard two months back, so...
If you have any more ideas on Metro... I want to keep moving to the topic so we make sure we hit everything. Just please feel free to email into the Acton Town Council and we can process those. But if anything you guys think of later, please send it in. We'll put it... Staying on the topic rail, we're moving towards high-speed rail. You want to talk about what's been proposed?
Well, we got a call about, what, a month ago, I'd say. And High-Speed Rail has said, "Well, we're looking at underground routes for you, for Acton." I wish it was for me. I don't... For Acton. And of course, I was very happy to hear that. They did not give us any route, so we have no maps to show you. But they said it would be 100% underground through Acton. So when we asked for sort of the route that they would be following, it would be approximately along the same path that the route was going to be six years ago when they were going to go right south of the middle school with a big 60-foot-high berm. Infrastructure over Crown Valley that's right next to the high school. So, but it will be underground, which sounded great. Okay, it sounded really awesome. Except they said they want to use Acton as a base for doing what they call bi-directional drilling. So they're going to find a place in Acton, dig a big old pit that's 100 feet deep, and then run their board of the boring guys this way and that way. And then when it's all done, they'll cover it all up. So it will still be... I call it a hatch and patch. They call it a cut and cover. But when, at least when the train operates, it would be 100% underground, which is something for 14 years, we've never been able to do.
And as we pointed out to the numerous times, the amount of sound generated by the train is ridiculous. And the amount of tourists that they were talking about per day, it's just non-stop.
Yeah, it's 96 round trips per day.
And what was the... What was the...
It was 200 trips, right?
The audio volume.
Using High-Speed Rails' own... Using their own programs and their sound assessments. It was... It would be, if you were 1,000 feet from the right of way, it would be, I think, 85 decibels every time it went by, which is, if you're 50 feet from a jackhammer, I think that's 82 decibels.
Yes, so pretty low too.
And the way they were... They have been getting away with declaring that this amount of noise is not a significant impact under CECL, which is the California Environmental Quality Act, which we refer to where you do environmental impact reports, is that they've taken the noise insult that comes every, you know, three minutes during peak time and then they average it over 24 hours. So the bulk noise impact is only like 7, 10, maybe 8 decibels, which they're saying, "Oh, that's not over a threshold of concern." Although we have ways to argue that. We've convinced them that if they try to do that here, they will lose. And they will lose because I do CECL for a living. I know what we do in that.
And I think that I just wanted to enumerate that so that we could look at why it's so important to try to get it underground. Because I cannot imagine our kids going to high school and having that thing streaming by every three minutes.
And it would be terrible.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it would be terrible. So while, you know, we stated we don't want it here. If we have to have it here, that seems like the best option. It's like, "Hey, I don't want to die," right? So... So we had the call with them. That's Provo Drilling. I'll be here when you can talk about, you know, whether to shift the location.
Yeah, now, yeah, the problem is where they want to put it is going to be right there at Annalow Woods. So the trucks will be running 24 hours a day using that intersection where we have the middle school and all the freeway traffic for the freeway serving businesses. So I wanted to find out if people thought about asking if it could be shifted, if that's an option we want to look at. Because I have trouble buying what they're proposing at that location.
So Jackie, I've looked at Google Earth and I understand why they choose that location. Because there is... If you go online and you go to High-Speed Rail website and you look at some of these construction sites, these things are huge. We're talking about material conveyors, trucks coming in and out, staging offices for construction people, parking for construction people. I mean, these sites are acres and acres and acres. And if you look at Google Earth, that site is perfect. There's no development there except you have the freeway on one side. You've got Annalow Woods and Seadrill on the other side.
And a bunch of homes.
And a bunch of homes, which is going to impact significantly, I'm sure. And we've got Crown Valley, which is our middle school. And if they put it there and use Crown Valley, Crown Valley will be 24/7 trucks. So coming off the freeway and on the freeway. Now, I've seen construction sites like this where they've actually put their own on and off ramps on the freeway for these types of construction sites. So there may be things that could be done that make that site more...
Maybe go down to Essendon.
But it would be much better if they can be convinced to move that on one side of town where there's no people, on the other side of town where there's no people, and maybe not get a 50/50, drilling one direction and drilling the other. But it's going to be so close considering the amount of miles they need to drill that the actual distance, you know, made equal, is not that big.
We did push them for that, to look for another site.
Oh, well, she's like, "Ah, it's not something we look at in the environmental stage when we do the EIR." I'm like, "Don't. Before the EIR." You need to put it in.
Because that's what's going to impact the environment.
And we did do that.
It's like that. I literally did.
Looking at Google Earth, it's going to have to go way west. It's going to have to go way north.
Well, it's too close to our junior high.
Yeah, it's astronomical. And that's where all the freeway tru... Right.
That's where they're all fair. I mean, that's where the mains are put down. It's... I mean, that's here or there. All that's... That's main artery. I would expect they're going to lobby very hard for that location.
That's why we're here. We can lobby hard too.
And that's why it's going to be a lot, you know, you can hear from a lot of people about the destruction of what this is going to be. Okay, so go on to their website. They are massive.
So I think the pressure on this, you know, they can put in the pressure cookies. Is that this is supposed to start getting...
No, no, Lake... Lake is a... But it's still... We have to get it in early enough so that it's gelled by the time the draft gets out. I'd like to know what people think of this. I'm... I'll tell you honestly, I'm grateful that at least we have an underground route. Because I, in 2010, I stopped fighting the project because it just wasn't... The voters voted for it. It's come for it. I don't know whether we like it or not.
Well, we didn't stop fighting. We stopped fighting.
We changed our tactic.
We changed our tactic.
Trying to make it not kill our towns.
And the tactic is, if you say, "No, we don't want it," you exclude yourself from the conversation. So now we're saying, "Well, we'd rather not have it, but if it's got to be here, it's got to go underground." And that's the tactic the town council's going to take for the last...
Can you...
I don't remember how...
Yeah, we have a couple of questions here. One, if they're any step forward to preparation of the train as a underground because they say 200 feet are well as 500, 600 feet.
When we asked, they stated that if you wanted to give an example, it would be like going down to where they have the subway in LA. And he said, "Maybe somewhere that the technology..."
I don't know if the technology in LA is not well prepared. It's like this.
So they tried to convince us that it was...
My concern is, if I don't run the ground, they could ruin it if they're anywhere... How far do I have to get away from?
Yeah, well, we're assuming that they're going to feel this possible violation.
About to mention horses and everything else with the ground. Also, second question is funding. And California right now is in desperate financial need because of the coronavirus. They do not get revenue.
You know, it actually asked me to answer that question.
It's a rhetorical question, eh?
I got them. They go out of their bus. They just said that they just hired 4,000 new workers. That they're bringing all these construction jobs to the Central Valley. 4,000 workers. They interviewed some workers on TV. She said, you know, what was it? What they had jobs.
I want to introduce Troy when he goes, "He's from the town council."
My wife has to go. I'm trying to fix some fences.
I have a question. If there's no commuters that are going to use this train...
Who's going to use the train? Should we walk the train?
You have all these...
No, these are rhetorical questions, right? Actually, I...
Bad entrance from here to San Francisco. I mean, so I'm guessing that that's not a commuter. It's leisure or business. I don't know. But yeah, they're not going to be stopping up. People aren't going to hop on the high-speed rail and then hop off and, you know, thread over mine and say, "Hey, I'm in Acton, so..." Why not?
Well, be careful. That bugbear will come right back.
Well, the plan never was...
No, no. No, no.
So they get on San Francisco, Crown Valley, come down the Central Valley. They stop at Palmdale. He's like, "Oh, God." Then they just go down to Burbank Airport at 3:50. And then it's 2:50 past 9:00. And they go down to Union Station. And then the basic plan is there, as I remember, San Diego is supposed to join and come up to Union Station. And then they go to San Diego, San Francisco, pass down. The ultimate goal, the third plan I face, I think, is that people coming into Indian Station, Burbank Airport, coming down to Crown and Costin, Crown Valley, we didn't even zoom out to Las Vegas. That's where the money is going. And that's where you have to follow them.
Which is probably why I think, and we've talked about this sometimes, is that we feel that we're always going to be on the map for having to come through a way. Because whether or not they connect up there, they can still go to Vegas or out that way. So that this section, no matter what we're going to fight or do, whether we're fighting the one way to San Francisco or fighting the one way to Vegas, it's double whammy. All roads come through Acton.
That's right.
No, also, they just go underground.
Underground route that was supposed to come to Angeles National.
Well, what happened to it? Had it built with existing rail lines?
No, it was... No, no, no. It's not on the table. It's underground everywhere. But in Acton, it's very much above ground in Acton.
They're going to go underground to Angeles Forest. They can stay underground. They don't have to...
You got that right.
Above ground from Forest and then all the way to the Intermodal.
And they've already stated this is their preferred route. They've clarified that.
I feel like it's nasty.
Well, that particular route goes literally above ground, over Palm Ranch. So we were not happy with that route.
No. If they're going to start underground, they can finish underground.
All right, so if you have anything, you know, any input, any ideas, anything on that placement, we'll be putting out something. Hopefully, we'll be able to start meeting sooner or later officially and we can start putting together... We had a group that we were organizing some stuff.
We always meet on here. It's nice being a center. I can follow. We'll just go look back.
Yeah, by then, we'll be getting that done. So we'll kind of keep you guys updated on that aspect. So we keep going this light as we... Next thing I'm quick, that's kind of on what we've been... A whole week is the Acton Water companies. So, you know, the town council is voice support for all of our companies. This one's a little different because there kind of was a curveball from...
The night before the hearing, yeah, so we, you know, we fought side by side with the water hauler companies. We had a study to exemplify CECL. We finally got that argument through. Everything was scheduled for here in Lending Water, Acton Water, same day. I'm on the board of the utilities chair. It supported that. And suddenly, there was an announcement that the night before, the representative of the property owner of Acton Water, the night... It's up on the website, so you can look. Wanted to make sure that the CUP addressed their request to sell up to 1,000 acre-feet of water to Waterworks District 37. And they wanted to change their pumping rates and have substantially more trucks than what they'd already had. So immediately, and they asked for a continuance to a date certain July 8th, so that this hearing is now going to happen on July 8th. So we contacted regional planning, asked for the backup on the information, which we could provide. We provided it to all the papers, what the representative provided to regional planning and then that we got copies of. And we said we were going to suspend our support for this. So we understood the request and understood how it might affect... You know, that's a substantial increase, 1,000 acre-feet of water beyond what I think right now they're permitted for 240 acre-feet a year. And we were also wondering, is that going to be in addition to their water hauling? Or if they sell all their water just to Waterworks District 37, all 1,000 acre-feet? Does that mean they... There will be years when they won't haul water? And if that's the case, what do we do about the people who rely on their wells to...
To survive.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so...
Do we have any, to put the latest terms, like how many trucks for 1,000 acre-feet of water?
If we... Four times what they're pumping... Of that to now, when they're like 10% of what they're... 10 or 15% of what they're allowed to do. They're talking about 80 trucks. Is that what it was? I don't remember, so yeah.
I'm just trying to put in actually real, like...
1,000 acre-feet is enough... 1,000 acre-feet is enough to serve nine... No, 9,000 homes of 100 gallons a day per person of three people. Right, I think that was the dots. It was a lot.
And it also was considered or presented that they want a different water source at that one point?
Yes, they claim that their water source is different to the rest of the communities. They cited a report from 1980, which I got a copy of and I read it. I mean, it's a GeoTech report. I read it cover to cover and we dealt with that. So regional planning has... The new thing is that regional planning is now posing or requesting the applicant to consider just letting the CUP go through as... requesting the applicant to consider just letting the CUP go through as we had understood it before. And to process this Water Works District 37 action through, they have to go through the permit process from the State Water, uh, Resources Control Board, anyone to get a permit from them, so they'll process it there. So it really would be a regional planning action, potentially other than maybe an SEA, CUP would have to be. So, I, you know, this is a part of that team, and I just wanted to find out what this community thinks about, if you go forward just so that they can get their CUP going, just to address those issues.
For existing operations?
Yes, exactly.
Not District 37, sale.
Where is District 37?
That's the water for Acton. The county water is hooked up to the county. If you have county water in Acton, that would be your.
So why would, so you would buy one from the county, you'd have those guys come in?
No, so they would be selling water to the county.
They're going to put all.
The county would be, that would be the supplier for the county.
Oh, they're thinking about putting a pipe in. They have two wells, one's working now, one's, uh, in Mopals, I guess, is not the right term, but they want it.
It was never you on that.
So they're planning on, well, the idea was to buy water, to sell water to Water Works District, Water Works District, put a pipe in and connect up to their second one. The first well would still be using the useful water. But we, I was concerned that if they get 1,000 acre feet a year, it might just be easier to sell it on Water Works District 37 instead of all of it.
And then we might lose.
And then we don't have water.
So we're down there, we have water, but it's already, yeah, there are lots of people who are driving wells or seasonal wells. Hence why we've supported, there's a piece of fossil heart, other concerns that, you know, I had and we get, and that, uh, we're talking about. The other concern, maybe it needs to be a college study, which then was everybody's precarious, you know, the college study just doesn't use what they're impacting, so.
And what we also were concerned about affecting, you know, they have, this report talks about of, uh, water sources in the river, but also the, they call it air sources, they're listed, and, and the springs, they have, you know, areas up this way too, so.
We had a conversation with, we had a conversation with Water Works District 37. Jackie was on that call, he was calling. And it was interesting that a lot of people in District 37, they just think so, only Acton was part of the government's maps. The thought that there were other people driving wells that are going to be affected, it had, it had entered their consciousness in this whole discussion today. So, it's important, I think, for them to realize that any impact, the, the, the well we're acting water is going to affect a lot of other people around. And.
They had no idea that people east of, oh, I don't know, uh, uh, what's that development near Blum Ranch, where Joyce lives, it's certainly rich, that people have, are wells east of there. It's like, Acton goes on for four miles, of course.
They had pretty much assumed that most of the private wells are on the, uh, the north, the east side, or, yeah, the north side of South, whatever that is. North side of the freeway.
So, I have a question about, you know, some of the water in one and then the other, like they're right next to each other, except for maybe five blocks, is that all true?
College doesn't support.
No, we, uh, I went through the slave report very carefully and conferred with Water Works District 37 and regional planning, and everybody's agreed with that statement was categorically.
And for, yes.
Based on the slave.
All.
What was the date on the slave?
That was why I reacted so strongly on that.
Oh, no.
Was it like slave in 1980?
1980.
90.
90.
90, yeah, it, there was another report, Bourbon, something reported. And we can post slave report on the website. Oh, yeah, I got it, I got it within 24 hours. I was like, on that. Yeah, so I didn't disclose it. She's the first that I called. Do you know what the slave report is?
Well, and I was, I had a COVID, where I think they said, "Here's the digital stuff." Because they, you don't have.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we can post it. If you're interested, we'll put that. So what do people think about this idea of life creating?
So warning the CUP for the existing operation, water deliveries, setting aside, uh, the additional water sales to District 37.
So where does 37 get their water?
Down?
Yeah. They have their water. We have a well there, yes, the riverbed, right?
We have four wells in the riverbed.
Okay, so are they going to sell it to them when ours get a little low or something?
No, what they're saying is that two of the wells in the riverbed, um, have higher nitrate concentrations than the state allows. So they've got to blend the water with fresh water to get the nitrate level below the statement and be able to. So what we do is draw less from well number one and two, which are the westernmost wells, I guess, when we're in the right direction, in the river, and we look, and use this Acton Water to blend wells three and four, which are the ones close to the, uh, whatever that thing is there.
Might be the one.
Baseball fields.
Yeah.
Yeah. So down that area, to basically draw the same amount of water. They were very clear that they don't want to draw more water than we do. And they're also trying to, here's what we're concerned, we have new developments coming in, we have one going in near Agua del Se, and that's supposed to be on AVEC. And we have.
Which is a different water supplier, coming down from Mail and Bell.
Right.
And we have, and we have people who want to grow hemp in this area, who consume tons of water, which we've also tried to say, "Well, that needs to come from AVEC."
Yeah, 17,000 gallons a day.
Unfortunately, they're on one water.
It's per acre.
Per acre, yeah. So huge amounts of water. So, well, Water Works District 37 has said is, "Well, if we're going to bill you for AVEC water at seven times the cost of Acton water," that's the number it gives. So if you're in a new development, you're going to pay the AVEC rate, and if you are growing hemp, you're going to pay the AVEC rate. And through some kind of accounting system, they're going to buy, I think if I understood correctly, if they're going to charge you the AVEC rate, they're saying they're going to buy it from AVEC.
Yeah.
But that's a policy. And I, you know, policies change when things, times get tough. So my concern is.
Yeah, AVEC change.
If AVEC has a change in, in their water availability, because it's controlled by, by how much water they get, and, and so their rations go up and down, ration, I think is the right word, go up and down with seasonal constraints. So if AVEC ever got tight on water and wasn't available to supplement these hemp growers and new developments, then it's going to have to come out of our District 37 wells for.
And that's why I, that's where it's like, no, it's against every state statute you can think of, to take water from one basin and send it to another. Now, I have no problem with Water Works District 37 and supporting the Crisula's development on the Gose. But I have a problem with it, is if Acton water goes into that development, because that's not allowed, okay? And that's going to affect our wells here. That's why they made that commitment, and we have to be vigilant, because what you're saying is absolutely right.
So it's, it's almost like, you know, we must remember that separates these two bodies of water, and it's going to be very hard for them to.
I, I agree, you got to stay on it. I'm generally ready right now.
Is this possibly just another step in a direction that the county would like to go, just to control all the water in Acton?
I'm glad you mentioned that, because about two hours ago, we got an email confirming, yes, the LA County Water Plan is back on track, we're going to start reaching out to us in about a month, to do exactly what you're talking about, just control all the water in LA County. So, that, that is, I wasn't going to mention that, that's just came out.
Always on my mind, because the handwriting is on the wall, and the question is, will we do that?
Well, I, as soon as we know, we will need another protest meeting in a month or so, the, we should have all the information from Matt, Matt Frere, who, who you know, who's spiritual, I think.
I'd like to just, one more comment on this. These water haulers are essential to our community, and I don't think anybody doesn't think that's the case. But they are operating their businesses in A2, and it's not a by rights, so they need these CUPs. So our community looks at these CUPs, at least I do, like, okay, they're going to be running trucks, there's going to be more activity on this parcel, but they're doing something that benefits the community and its needs, so we're going to give them these standards. And looking through that lens, yes, I think we should, you know, Acton Water should get their CUP to deliver water to Acton via trucks. But it really needs to look at carefully, it would have turned into a business that's not necessarily community service. Because when the water goes to AVEC, I mean, sorry, the water goes at District 37, it's only serving half of the water, and possibly hurting the other half. So I, I think it needs to be completely separate.
Well, I, I said over and over in that meeting, and I don't know if you guys heard, they kept saying, "Oh, it sounds like Jackie's in favor of this District 37." And I said, "Do not take," I said, I, just the opposite, I said, "I am not saying anything that you're talking about on 37. I am only cool with the CUP, that's it, nothing more. Do not assume." I had to say it three times, and they still think, I don't know.
So this is another case where I think the people should comment to the.
Yes, please.
Either to us or, and directly to, um, the planning commission. About, you know, "Hey, Acton needs their water haulers."
Yep.
And, you know, "Please try to keep these two things up."
And let us know if you're concerned about the Water Works District 37, as a separate email.
And they talked about drilling another well too. So if, if you just told Acton Water that they could sell their water to 37, but they couldn't do the hauling, couldn't Lundie pick up the slack and do all the hauling?
He's got a cap on his.
Oh, he's got a cap.
So they.
And then that would cause the problem we don't want to happen, which is, okay, we're giving this allocation to this person, so let's just increase up this other person's allocation. We don't know what that's going to do to people's wells up on the terraces.
And Lundie and Acton Water are, they're literally neighbors, right? They're 100 feet apart, they're, they're wells, so.
And there's Carson Water, who's coming along. We always support them, so we can also try to, I mean, this, I see the county, you know, getting their footing, they're willing to add water and then going for it with Carson. I know Barbara Carson did not want to give up her, her business, and probably, you know, I don't think they want to do that either.
No.
They want, I think they want to make it even more.
We have to, we have to be vigilant.
They like, down the road, be willing to sell, and then when the county controls all the water, guess what? The piping will go into the testing video. They're not going to haul a lot.
I'll be dead with that area. I'll be dead.
Well, you, it's not necessary. It seems to be.
Well, that's the relative, I can't remember moving past it. The other, the part of information I think is that this District 37, uh, is going to work for 16 months, so it's a relatively, it just didn't happen, we never knew about it, but, yeah, so, I mean, it didn't happen overnight, and it's not going, it sounds to me like there's a lot of work that needs to happen, uh, at the state level, county, state, you can give all this permits and stuff, taking care of, so this is not going to happen tomorrow, so we need the water haulers, you know, for the summer?
Maybe if we don't keep the CUP, the new venture, that that gives the county a foothold in public selling of water, and if one don't get through it, of course, another.
I know, I.
Well, the other concern is, once you're selling water, why, why would you ever want to operate with trucks?
That's what I was really putting on all the trucks now.
From a business point of view, you're no longer supporting, I mean, why would you want to operate trucks?
You wouldn't.
Yes, you can.
You know, Mike?
I?
Yeah.
Us, sure. Not, not you guys. 37, I was first to handle this. Well, they're probably, put me on 37, I don't know, because my well will be gone.
Maybe from a water rule, except the pipe to the.
And if you add in, hold on, we'll all see that.
Moving on to the same, uh, the 37 is now a sustainability plan, which sounds great. Um, you want to talk about?
Yeah, I, I, last week, that's why it wasn't in the official notice, I was sent out. Last week, the county dropped their draft, uh, progress report on implementing the sustainability plan. And comments are due July 1st, so we have very little time. And a big problem I have with this is that a, a pillar activity that they're going to pursue is decarbonization of buildings, which sounds, you know, nice and great, no greenhouse gases, all that other stuff. Except for what that means is that they will be putting in ordinances at first to prohibit the installation of new space heaters and water heaters, I don't know about cooking, but potentially cooking, that are gas-fired or propane-fired. They want it electrified, everybody. And so, and then eventually it's to retrofit, if you have it. And, and what this draft report says is, "Oh, we're just going to do, um, just new construction at the beginning." But that's not normally how building codes are written. Normally they're written, "After X day, uh, you cannot install these things in unincorporated areas," and they'll list anything else. So we, okay, the Chief Sustainability Officer, who is the head of the Chief Sustainability Office, has, does not, has not, and will not reach out to any rural communities on this issue. The sustainability plan is adopted August 6th. They came up with a list of priorities in December, put it out for public comment, adopted it, sent it to the board, and we never knew anything about it. And this, uh, here's the, the real backstory on this. The, uh, the, Public Works is tasked with implementing this decarbonizing buildings and getting rid of gas-fired heaters and gas-fired, um, water heaters. And Public Works said, "Do not put this on the high priority list, this is not the first thing rolling out, we need to study this for a couple of years." Supervisor Barker supported that. Supervisor Seth Barker, asked for a study, now motion was passed in August of last year, so she gave it up, but it was, it looked like it was going to be complicated, so she literally said, "No, we're not doing that." And the Chief Sustainability Officer put this decarbonization on the high priority list anyway. I have seen an email from Public Works in December saying, "We don't want item 85 of this, don't put it on there." And they put it on anyway. And now they're rolling forward. What I'm so upset about is that they're forcing us into depending on electricity, which is the most unreliable utility that we have. And Acton and Agua del Se School District was shut down for a week last year. And, and the only reason I was able, my, and my family, to bathe and to cook and to have heat was because we were on, you know, we're not on electricity. Now, in January, the folks in Three Points and Lea River Mountain and the Meac area were out of power for seven straight days, they had two feet of snow. And the only reason there was nobody freezing to death is they're all waiting. That goes away if they succeed and achieve the goals that they want. So I, I, we have somehow got to get the, the Chief Sustainability Officer to, to talk to us and to not implement these things in places where PPS happens, or snow, or anything else that will just eliminate people's power for a week, seven, six, seven days. And I, I don't know what people think about it, but they need to tell us, if they're concerned about this, that they really want to fight this, because I think it needs to be fought.
If this is about 100% that they cannot tell us how we want to power our homes and our properties.
I agree.
Jackie? Do we have his name? Is he appointed by Barker?
Uh, there, he was hired for this, he was hired for this purpose, and, and he is, um, his name is Gary Gerro, or Jerry Gerro. And he's a very nice man. When we, we didn't, okay, the sustainability plan was in process for almost 18 months. We never knew about it until June 22nd, when the draft was dropped and it was going to go to the board for approval, and we're like, whoa. And the stuff in this, it was prohibiting, I don't know if you remember some of the articles or letters that we wrote, both of your publications published them, they were going to prohibit all ministerial development within, I think, 10 years, and discretionary, you know, discretionary within five years, which means you couldn't even replace your roof, you got to pull a ministerial permit to replace your roof. And if they were going to prohibit that within five years, our houses were going to be rented. And, and when we reached out to him, he came up, he met, seemed to understand, he fixed that terrible problem, and then we've never heard from him again. And when I, I, I saw a tweet on this priorities list, that, that the comments were due the next day on Twitter, and I went to Twitter, but I was on their website, I saw it, I went over to it, and I'm like, "What is this?" And I emailed him, he goes, "Oh, I'm sorry you didn't get a notice, here it is." We had no, we had no, we don't comment unless we hear from the community.
Well, they typically go, we're, we're, we get things in the actual physical mail, and there's at least an email list, and we're on every freaking emails. Well, we should be, at the very minimum, it should be, the owners should be on the entities to provide us with something. We shouldn't have to chase down every crazy thing that's being performed. But that's kind of what we had to do, including trolling Twitter for random government announcements.
It was just, it was just, they thought their official notification platform, they didn't invite anybody. Nobody from North County. Not one resident from half the county was invited to participate in any of these efforts.
ARTC had been shut and they didn't contact anybody. So that's not just our town, they're bringing
It's entire North County. So I, we need to hear from you guys if you would just send an email saying, if, if, telling us what you think about requiring electrification throughout the community of Acton. With the backdrop of PSPS, which is not going away by the way.
So we should talk about it.
What is so idiotic about all this is, when you look at things like, basically, we're worried about greenhouse gas and burning fossil fuels. We look at the number of people living here. It's insignificant here.
Exactly.
So there's no significant contribution at all.
Well, not only that, Tom, I can plant a tree and offset all my THD emissions.
Absolutely.
That is totally
So they, so as, again, they would rather either try to say that you shouldn't be here because it's not sustainable under our idea with sustainability. Because we can't have electricity because it's too dangerous. We can't burn fossil fuels because whatever, it's, you know, we're going to have global warming. And maybe another 40 years, we'll be underwater, you know? And the board was off maybe 40 years.
Self-protection.
Yeah, self-protection.
So, yeah, we'll get it, he's up easy.
So, over the top. It's just, it's absurd.
No, we want you to move away from it in the high rise.
Which I think we ought to highlight, the, the, we should go up in pandemic, probably eat that idea. Maybe, maybe we have it right out here, we're spread out and
To my knowledge, my breath is sustained. It doesn't cover pandemic at all. They haven't even addressed the idea that packing everybody together on electricity leads to new transmission of diseases. So, I don't know, it's We need, we need our ability to operate on gasoline, diesel, and propane because we get cut off from the grid all too often. And many times we get cut off because they just feel that it's too unsafe for us to be attached to. You know, if we can fix that, we can give us a safe electrical grid that we can run 24/7, then they should allow us some less pressures. And that's the context.
What I can say, when generators went for our DG365, it's when, when things arise, that
Well, here's the part, another part, the draft immunity climate action plan is out, which we notified everybody that we made comments on it, so we hope you guys looked at it. But that, the workshop that they had for that, it was limited to 100 people, a bunch of time. We got the notice on it, because this is also decarbonization. We RSVP'd and the spaces were already taken up. So I watched the video later and, and Alejandro took a poll of everybody who participated. Everybody, all 100 people, they all, they admitted whether they lived in the city, unincorporated LA, or outside LA County. And every one of them was in the city or outside of LA County. The people who were affected, only us are affected by the C cap. People in the city are not, because they're not bound by it. We all, and we couldn't even get into websites. It was, and the fact that, that Supervisor Barker has put the kibosh on this, he's studied this carefully. Public Works did the same thing, tried to anyway. I got his emails, I, trust me, I could back this up. And the Chief Sustainability Officer still put it in and is moving forward on it. It's horrifying to me. And I don't even know that Supervisor Barker knows this.
What's so ironic about this whole situation is, is like you said, electricity is not dependable. So they want us off the fossil fuels on new electricity. So I, like my neighbors, would go out and get the next gen generator, go to my propane tank. So when the electricity's cut off, I'm back on propane, working the generator. Where's, what did they get out of it?
Well, don't worry, because
You know, they're going to ban
They're going to ban that next Slightly just because, as we transition, like we'll talk a little bit about PSPS and what's going on with that. But the, that was brought up, because we were brought up, cell towers should not be available. K-10 not being available during the PSPS and how
Water haulers are pumped, not
Water haulers. We were basically told that part of this is in South Coast AQ. Is it South Coast? So part of the district, part of our town is in South Coast. So they can't run the generator more than a certain number of hours per year. So in other words, hey
Still 200 hours a year, they
Correct, correct. But the point being is that, that, that was the excuse of, well, they can't run it, they can't keep the communication up because of that. It's like, this is insane, you're going to cut the power. And then, hey, how are we supposed to know if the fire's coming through? I said, you know, we brought it up in the call. This is like, I had a case interview about a fire, our whole street burned down. The only reason why, we had Sheriff's Department, a couple of them would say evacuate. So we're like, that's not going to happen if other folks are here. People don't have your cell phone, most people don't have regular landlines anymore. You are not going to know, and then they're going to kill you. Because they're not going to, maybe they can't run a generator for more than 200 hours. It's crazy. So, uh, so I guess we can kind of segue that.
But I actually have a question. Is it okay if I made some public comments for the President's meeting on this issue? Does it, but is it really a problem? Feel free to make your own comments on this in the board's
We do need some other voices in that
Or just write an email and we can forward it.
Yeah, anything, email, make a public comment, if any of that is awesome. So it's not just one voice at a time.
I want to thank Jackie because Jackie has spent a tremendous amount of time I don't even understand what she's talking about. Today, I was on the, on the call with Connie Chung and Jackie and Susan Senter for an hour and a half today. I didn't know basically what they were talking about the majority of the time. I did take notes that I'm going to review again tonight, so I can get a little more educated. But I don't know what we can do without Jackie in this meeting. Because I know she hates that, but I can't read it. So, thank you, Jackie, I really appreciate it.
It's got to get done, so.
It's, we got to save this town, we've got to save our two towns.
Every damn day.
Every stupid
And it's just an onslaught even more, because we're not able to even have a voice right now.
Right.
So this is why we're here. So I appreciate you guys all coming out. Just want to touch a little bit on PSPS, and I don't know if there's anything else we can do.
Go ahead.
You know, we had a call with Edison, and the gist of it was that they were asking us to make Solomon's choice, Sophie's choice, one of the back choices. They had a pilot program in which they would give, was it two or three? Three, three businesses we could pick. They would put a transfer switch and supply a generator for. We could pick those three businesses. Letting us, we can just pick. So, we told them, we told them, I said, so that's what I was going to tell them. This is a terrible idea for, I mean, to ask us, why don't, you know, well, they wanted us to tell them what was vital. And it's like, well, frankly, everybody's business is vital because everybody's business is vital. So we need to give them the kind of answer that is, well, what about your market? Well, yeah, we have more than one market. What about your gas station? We have more than one gas station. What about your, so
So then we're supposed to pick?
Yeah, terrible. And, and so part of that same conversation, they also asked, well, this is sounding like these are going to continue. And we know from helicopter trips and trucks on every street and power, I mean, just people had a Tom, how many times did you get out of power last year? 11 times, it was without power. Not, not including the PSPS. So there were folks that, that were out that, you know, this is supposed to be hardening the grid. We're supposed to be seeing some more resiliency so that we're going to have things shut off. And we were kind of told, you know, I asked for a timeline. Hey, is this, is this one year thing? We're doing this one more year? Yeah. It'll be hardened to a point that we might not be doing this off. So then we never got a
What we were told would not be off, say, is 10 years.
They wouldn't give us that.
They told us 10 years. Oh, my God. No, they told us forever.
Forever.
It'll just be less.
It'll be much, definitely.
And on that, on that note, I mean, because we asked them, okay, how much has your threshold been?
Yes, yeah.
And what we asked them explicitly was, okay, if it's X number of miles per hour wind, and the new standard would be Y hours per hour. Take that new standard, do a look back at the decision tree you followed to watch to shut us down, and tell us how much less shut down. They said, oh, that's just So, so, but no, but, 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 stick to it. See, we are a party in the PUC proceeding on the terrible jobs that the utilities did. So I submitted a discovery request to them, and they've still got a few more days to get back, asking that very same question. If they don't answer it, we're going to the judge. And there are three hearings conferences that actually stated that they're looking for two days, and they haven't ready yet. So that, they're, we're still bird dogging this, we're not letting this go.
Part of this whole conversation to tie into that is the fact that Mountain was under PSPS warning as well, but wasn't shut off. So we've asked to, for them to provide criteria, why they didn't reach that, we didn't. So it's the same place, it's the same kind of stuff.
Why we shouldn't, because it was zone two, everything was moisture, right? Because the community wasn't big, big factor on it.
Well, but they
They didn't say that.
They didn't say that.
They didn't tell you that, they didn't tell us that.
At least it's only, it's 25 miles an hour, zero humidity. And that's what will trigger, like, their evaluation, their whole process. So if we have those two things going on, that's when they start like monitoring, sending out the fire crews and all that other stuff. It's zero humidity, 25 miles, which 25 miles are happening out there.
Yeah.
But, you know, that, hence why like the last week or whatever, when the winter howled, but it had just rained, humidity was pretty high, so there was no shut offs.
So it's interesting, though, that they've given you the criteria. We have asked you. Maybe it's this guy.
I didn't think it was like, I just don't let it
We got to tell the shooter.
No, because I, and one of the reasons why is I was up on the pass and the lines, it was so gusty up there. Over at Vincent, I mean, like, they were swinging, and I was like, thinking like, somebody's got a transmission.
Those are, those are transmission lines, they won't shut those down.
Because that's surprising.
But that goes to LA. Yes, that, no, that is
They could be whipping people on the ground.
No, because it's going to LA, or San, actually, San Francisco.
On the pilot program, there's three things that we can choose. Do you want input from the community on that? And do the, and do the three schools count as three separate things? Or do the schools count as one?
No, they would count as three separate. And, and we were also told that the fire department may or may not, they were supposed to get back to us on that. They said
We should think about the fire department.
Yeah. Like, are you We're like, wait a minute, they're not already on generator? Like, shut them off, people were supposed to put out the fire, that's supposed to start
The two, the two 881s are too small, so
So they're not on generator?
Yeah.
They're not there.
So they have a hand crank for the, for the gas, they have a hand crank if they need it. And then they were looking to see how they would do, because I mean, other than the trucks running, it's not like they actually need, they don't have like a dispatch center, they don't, other than cooking and their normal day operations.
Well, except for communications.
I want my firefighters rested in
No, no, it's like their Power, power, not the actual
Well, but communications, when we don't have power, we share our communications.
Their batteries, batteries and stuff like that, but they can charge them on the trucks and stuff, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but I, I would say then at that point, there's one. Because like, if they don't have generation, it, it seems insane that if they're going to cause the problem by not upgrading the infrastructure and providing, that means that, then they're going to, you know, gift us this thing of, hey, we're going to, yeah, we're going to do three wishes. So, and, and we need to ask whether we could spend, they basically said it was, what, $100,000 budget? There was a budget, the reason why it was three was because they, when they got quotes, it was roughly that it would be about three of them. If it came in cheaper, so if we had somebody in the community, I guess, that was willing to do the work at cost, and could do more, we could add more, they would be willing to do up to that budget.
Yeah, they said that we could fundraise as a community. Pay Edison to do this. So
Yeah, because So
Fundraise.
We're going to have your perspective is on this option for three wishes. And now we know the
The fire station should be on the wish list.
Agudalce gets its own three wishes, so we
I don't know, but downstate, they should
They wanted it to be
Also, in that city hall, I'm sure they were really thrilled to hear that the state, they're planning more of those station setup things like they had at the Women's Club, or whatnot, during the event.
One at the community center.
Yes.
Which is good.
Yeah, so there's at least something, but, yeah, it's basically the handout water and don't pay us to charge us all.
Oh, yay.
They had showers set up.
Did they?
I think they should be told that it'd be cheaper to spend $100,000 for each site than having people lose millions and millions of dollars of valuable property in possession. And there's a lot of damage, and that, millions for them.
We need to be soon, I think, we need to If we do, I'm sure there's a How much do you guys, if you can also just email in your thoughts, and I don't know how, we'll kind of go from there, we'll take a
Don't tell us your house, because houses don't, you can't do houses.
There was one good thing about the one circuit, uh, by
Oh, oh, yeah.
If you live, if you live near there, that, that corner, they're going to be segmenting that. There's going to be, there is going to be an outage or two, which will, whatever, is fine. Based upon what probably will happen. And that segment, there'll be a section there that will be resilient and stable when the other ones are shut off, so.
Those businesses will stay open?
Yeah, so, so those businesses already got their wish, they have a different landfill.
Yes.
They will stay open, so.
So you want one email for a topic?
That would be good, because we're talking forward, someone's open today on the site. And they wanted to sit through all this.
I think there's another topic, like, I did have a topic, we get comments on drones that
Oh, that's a whole other thing, yeah.
It's become one of my
So, so those of you who don't know, Edison, the county, you're going to be using drones, so, a lot.
It's regional planning, not part of Edison's
No, no, because Edison also has their own
The county council has told the Department of Regional Planning that if the parcel is vacant, it, they do not need any sort of
They don't have the fire
Uh, warrant to enter. And when I, I was on the phone, I'm like, I hope, well, I had a chat, because the calling card wasn't working. And I said, vacant land, Acton's full of vacant, my property's vacant.
When I'm not there, that county's vacant?
Yep. If, if the public has access to it, it is considered public, and they don't need a search warrant. So if you've got five acres and you only have a little bit of your house to use, part of it used up, like my house, my property's purely public, probably you make a run of drone over it, it will be not even talking to us. It's, it's a terrible thing.
Yes, it is.
So, a couple of things. The, we, we talked about it last summer when all this was going on, that Edison can't hire law enforcement for overtime spots specifically if they know they're going to have longer penalties. We contacted our administration. Edison had already reached out to our admin and gotten a quote, like how much it would be per minutes or whatever. But they obviously never pulled the trigger or tried to hire anybody. So you guys could always wish that, because that was one of the big concerns that everyone had, that with the power being out, and everyone knowing it's out for a few days, and they're not getting anything, it's designated overtime, like how we're having the issues with guys staying here or going to the city. It's directed, that's, they're not going to go anywhere, because this is what they're getting paid for. They're going to stay here, and Edison's paying for it, kind of thing. So they've already gone through, let it be getting through our admin to try to get to, you know, exactly what the next sales, they can never pull the trigger on it. So that, that should be brought up, as far as another site to consider is cell phone towers. Because even though the So that, that should be brought up, as far as another site to consider is cell phone towers, because even though the, the, the issue with their only, they don't, and that's, they only have, we have three hours of reserve time, because it's an eight-hour battery, but they don't replace the batteries, it's three hours, where we found out last year.
We asked, we asked for the county, and the cell phone providers, and Edison to get together, and said, we need to have a, a meeting with all the parties, other, other areas too that were affected by P S, P S, and come together to stop asking, what's happening? The cell phone company saying, so our call of Edison should be that it's only required to have X number of hours, because normally the power is, like, they can put on power, they're not counting on the hurricane area where they're, we're expected to have weeks of, uh, and, and, and that's what we have out of the ground, so we need to have everybody come together so we can cash this out as soon as, how can we have that, how can we get somebody else to cover it? No, they need to all come together, because it is a critical service for everybody, I mean.
And with the fire danger, now, like, with, not only do we do the, the P I A at time to evacuate, uh, through the tick fire, so. The amber alert kind of style of things, and that's all geocaching, so basically downtown can, you know, our, our sheriff information bureau can put a mass text message alert, and they say, here, there is a fire, that fire's on the way, you know, this is a volunteer evacuation or mandatory or whatever, and if there's no power, the cell phone towers are out, you're not gonna get that information, not every car can get to your houses, like, I'm one of three four-by-fours in the station, so, you know, who can actually get to those roads, or who's gonna be able to get to every single road, is kind of difficult on that.
Well, on that, on that note, because I, before you move on, I, the, the nice thing about this is the PUC controls both the telecommunications and the Edison. So that's another problem, we've known this for hearing conferences, but I don't think we should use one of our three wishes.
No, 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 they want, that, that's, that's, that's the same way, they wanted us to use our.
I'm saying bring that up as an issue, and, and as, and as public safety thing, apart from, like, if those different structures still up, then you have the ability to, in the worst case scenario, when a fire's coming in, to still be able to notify the public, without having to physically have somebody driving through with a loudspeaker doing a vacuage, we're still gonna try to do that, obviously, but that's not a lot of people in everything.
Well, and, and, and when, when the thing happens that they're trying to prevent, because it could happen anyway, because we still had, with the shutdown, we still had a fire here, by Red Rover, that, that happened during, uh, one of the stretches of the F P S, with no awareness, so a fire still happened, because it's windy and dry, uh, and so, you know, all the reason I knew is because I walked out of my house inside, and it happened to, and it was in the morning, and I, I ever sent cars, and started a, a brush fire. So, it's one of those things that, did, like you said, if you're not able to communicate, that we're done, that the whole site too is not just cell phone tower, because, uh, everybody who's on speaker is also gonna be in that time, because those facilities that should be, uh, all shut down too. So, uh, basically you cut off, so you can have no K P T, you're back to, like, what, a hand crank radio sitting in your car, a battery powered radio.
And you got one.
Well, no, I got one right after, because I'm like, oh, yeah, because we cut off. But it just, just goes to the point that, that we're so reliant on that, it's, it's a, it's a critical, it's a critical reason. Heck, during COVID, uh, telecommunications provided, we should. Critical for the information, so if we can do it for a pandemic, we can do it for, uh.
So I got an internal email saying that the guys that are gonna be with the drones are gonna have, uh, the orange vests, white hats, and they're gonna have, uh, their name and dedication to play on their vests.
This is from regional planning?
This is from our admin telling the lieutenants and us that they're gonna be coming from San Frigga, all the way through the A V, and they're obviously.
Are these Edison's, though? He was talking about the office.
No, no, this is, no, the, the, the drone guys, the drone operators.
For regional planning?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so you're telling me all I gotta get is a vest and a white hat?
It's right on the neighbor.
I know, I just, I mean, like, honestly, because what's the recourse, if, if somebody's flying a drone, or, or, let's just say somebody who's just left, they're pressing, they're flying a drone, whatever, whatever my recourse is, essentially, to fly my house, I can go, like, no, go away.
I have a contact and a phone number from Mike's.
Yeah, and that's.
Could you offer that to us?
Close it, they don't go to the front of somebody's.
Don't they have to ask this first? No, that was my point. If they, they, county council has decided, if, if regional planning deems the property to be vacant.
Oh, only, but if there's a house, and there's a big fence around it, then they can't play, oh, I.
Wait, it just means there's no structure on there. There are plenty of people who have five acres, and a house, and it's not vacant, and they'll go.
Then everybody that has a house and it's fenced, then they don't, they should assume that?
Yeah, I would assume that. What, what is the?
How far, like, how far?
Out in a pair. So there's one person, they are supposed to ask you, if there's, okay, if there's a house around there, but, uh, but they are gonna come out in a pair.
Yeah, but the county council said they won't ask, they deem that they will, whatever, and who knows what that means?
Yeah. And I know, I, I, unless I'm looking out there, they're gonna, well, I tried, I couldn't go away, so.
Exactly.
And I'll be, oh, I, I thought I was scared, I was.
Yeah.
No, no.
But they're dating.
David Wright, who had a regular journal, so I read, um, he had contracted for the hired by the county to do the survey, and David lying right over his house, and he saw that.
Are we gonna talk about that?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Well, as much as you know.
Yeah, okay, so, we get a report, and we post them, uh, it's only if something has been submitted. So we saw something had been submitted for the commercial lot on Santiago and Soladad, northwest-east corner. And so I immediately said, hey, what is it, what's going on? And the guy didn't get back to us for a month, right? And he finally said, oh, it's a used car, it's a car dealer, excuse me, and, um, and they're, they're starting the process, we're gonna send it to Public Works to see if they need traffic study, and send it to, you know, various agencies. And so we replied back, saying, well, we'd like to see the site plan, and where's the trail, and all this other stuff. So they sent the figures out to us, and we just, we could post them on, I just, I, it's the lady who sent me down this burg, does she see this burg here? Anyway, I forward the letter, the figures to her, just before I came down here. So we will post the project on the website, you know, we have pictures of that, what we know, and there is no trail. There's also the Dollar General going in, which, there's no trail on that, there seems to be a pole sign, which is a violation.
So, so to.
Where's the Dollar General?
To markets.
Right, right on Ron Hogg's property, downtown.
I don't know, we, we sent emails, and they just sort of know.
So, all, all we know then was the developers reached out and said.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Before they got community process, they wanted to reach out and talk to, uh, and express their concern.
Actually, what they said is they wanted to talk to the council, and I emailed back, and I said, we do not talk to developers in private conversations. And I said, but we don't have any needs, I invited the developer to come here, and the developer here, that's a difference.
Don't be scared, stand up.
It's all, the developers represented, actually, and we said, what we'll do is we can have a conference call where you just talk to us, we don't make a position, we're gonna take notes, and we're gonna post it on the town.
Maybe the other concern, if we don't, uh, get some information on it, what's gonna happen is, it'll just get approved, and, and.
Won't go anywhere.
Because the way things have been moving, they have not said, you know what, town councils can't meet, maybe we should hold off on approving anything, we're like, town councils can't meet. Yeah. So, uh, so our concern was, we only know what we've been provided with, it was, you know, so, uh, hopeful we'll have some meetings that we can share more, and we'll, we'll share what we have as we get, but it would be, like she said, right between two markets, um.
What do the market guys think?
We don't know that they even know anything, you know, it's, we really just share, so, we're, we're, we're hoping that if you know the market guys, and I know, and they will hear about this, and tell us what they think about it, and send this in, and, and also tell, you don't just have to talk to us, you can talk to regional planners, you just, planner, assigned planner, we don't know who that is yet, we're trying to find out, so.
Would they have the change they're looking on them?
Both, well, the sales, the car salesman, the assigned planner, somebody named LaFarge, and, uh, I think his emails have been published, and I've sent them out to the papers, and he's the one who made it back to me for a while, he was very, he goes, they don't have split the trail, and I'm like, oh, yes, you do, and so, you know, we're. Working, no, we're, we're, we're already in a struggle on that, but we don't know that much information, but we'll post it on the website, pictures are in there, it's not very detailed, the site plan, I don't know.
Everybody knows that's right across the street from the Mexican restaurant.
And I've been approved or re-approved?
Well, it's in the, it's not approved, but.
No, it's, it's in the beginning of the year.
But we, we will post Jeremiah's website, John, Tom, and Jeremiah. The figures that we have now, we'll put it up, and you, if you like it, don't like it, let us know what you think, so we.
Please let us know, so that we can respond.
And then, when the, look for the Dollar General too, because as soon as we know about that.
We'll, we'll form you guys, and, we'll need community input on that, want it, don't want it, whatever it is, uh, you know, we need to know, to be able to relay that, uh.
And I thought we already beat that one down.
Dollar General came around three years ago.
Yeah.
And they met with a lot of resistance, and, uh, they said, well, they come in, and they have things that you're looking for, so, right? And then there's also the question, do they wanna, you can have another lever sales.
Well, then they got to do a C U P, that's a whole different thing, and we have, then it would be discretionary, then our, with really.
The general dollar in 99, they don't have.
Oh.
Uh, before you, uh, which, oh, oh, sorry.
We've been here about two years, and we've been doing some more life on this site. What's the, and more, that we have talked about, is how do we, sort of, best approach, sort of, best approach to helping to contribute the effort, not affect the. Um, I think, and then, it's a treaty, robo, because properties are already so commercial, and as a commercial land, um, however, if the property is not compatible with our rural community, or, then, rural character, then it's, it's absolutely not permitted under the general plan. And that was part of the hour and a half long conversation this morning, they want to remove that section of zoning code that makes it compliant with the general plan. So we've convinced them to keep it there, and to make it stronger, so that's one good thing. So, it's harder when it's called a, a stereotypical, like this is, there are certain things we can ask for, and they have to do, it's like the trail. But if, if, and something that bothers me about this development, so we're drawing tonight, it's a big lot, they're always showing what they're gonna do on parking, which means they're gonna do something else at the other park. And it's only a little, I don't understand, it's a car lot with almost no parking for cars. And so I, there's a lot of, of things that aren't clear on this, so, so I guess the best thing to do, if you would, is, was to get the figures posted up on the website, uh, look at them, tell us everything that you have a problem with, why it's incompatible with a rural community, why, you know, we, we, we don't know, where this community is supposed to, the balance is supposed to be for, and what it's not supposed to be for, and so.
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, things that typically the past, you know, a lot of issues, freeway survey, it's not, you know, access, uh, traffic, those are all things that, that keep it true, so, you know, if you think through the lens of what exists now, and if it doesn't fit that.
For another example, we, we understand another truck storage facility is being closed or sold, again, this is stereotypical, this is a industrial zone property, but we have already said, made very clearly, where you're putting this, you have these slow-moving trucks turning onto the amount of Soladad, where it's only 20 feet wide, in a place that has force line to site, and cars going 70, 80 miles an hour is dangerous. We're gonna have that smashed-up ambulance situation that we had, that we finally got the stop sign there at Santiago and Soladad because of that. So, issues like that, if a big car, big rig car's gonna come in with a big, you know, drop the cars up, those big, whatever they are, or, car, yeah, or. Uh, so those are the sort of things that, if it doesn't fit the site, then it doesn't belong there.
Well, it already doesn't fit the site, because we've got the trucking outfit there already, so access is gonna be either on Santiago or on Soladad, and they're both dangerous in my mind, because the trucks are already coming out onto the street.
That's why we asked for their, how, their access ego, so, everything.
If you live close to there, that should be something.
Was because of that truck storage, exactly, so what do they, yeah, and we had a fight, like, Bruce Brock fought like the dickens to get that stop sign.
And it was, it was Patty.
Oh, Patty, Patty did too, Patty did too, I apologize.
Patty did a lot.
And there's that big wash between the two houses, the ones on Old Mike Road and Potter, that's a big wash, during rainy season, that thing is flooded with water.
Well, then you gotta bring, bring that up, too.
Drain is your chance, yeah.
Yeah, and those are all important things that we need to hear, and, but, we can package it, and when we know the planner, we'll post.
Plan, and you guys can reach out.
And you guys can, like.
And that's when the community contacting really makes a big difference.
It's just gonna be a professional car lot, and like, the one on Sierra Highland that's.
Aloha?
No, no, no.
I thought you were gonna, aloha, obviously, on Sierra. Good thing he means hello and goodbye.
The one right over here, she's now someone.
No, you don't want to try something like that.
And it's gonna be a professional car lot, there's gonna be lights on all night to protect your property. That's a light.
It's not true.
Oh, so this is the.
Hi, I'm John Rallis, I'm the deputy district director for, uh, Mike Garcia, and, uh. Wow, you guys got a lot of issues, right? There's a lot. Uh, actually, I went to the, uh, town council meeting before, uh, back in, like, November, February, where, uh, the guys are out, yeah, it's, uh, and, uh, Mike is definitely still keeping an eye on that, uh, still pushing for them to, uh, change their policy on the P S P S stuff, uh, it's just, uh, you know, he, and it's evident that going to the meetings and listening to them, their, you know, their risk assessment that they're doing is not taking into account, uh, the costs to, you know, right? And it's something that needs to be, we ask them.
Can I ask you something?
Sure.
Now, we could use the lift on the FCC, because my understanding is federal regulations require that they have sufficient backup power, so that they don't have the problems that we have. So if you could help us, we'll, we'll, we'll stomp on the P U C, we're not, but, but, we'll stomp, we'll stomp on their, in their party, and, uh, whatever, do the, whatever we have to do, but if you can help on the federal level, that would be really awesome.
Okay, I'll take all of it.
And I, sorry, I interrupted, but.
Yeah, no, no, it's fine. You're used to it, so. And then, I was also, you know, there's, actually, my, and the other thing is, there's some environmental stuff too, and, like, federal and stuff, I'm trying to think about stuff like that, but, I was good, you know, it was really interesting, I thought it was funny to hear your point about, uh, the average sound level, so, and good news, we'll put a Saturn five rocket that takes off once a day, two o'clock in the morning, you know, like, we average, no impact any. That's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard.
Well, just, you know how we're, we're trying to comment on this, because Nemo, which is the federal version of C U P, both Nemo and C U P say that when you assess the impact, you have to identify the impact at the time and the location that it happens. So we, we, I, I literally told Michelle, in the last couple of meetings that we had, I showed it to her, I said, you do this, we will sue, and you will lose. And now we have an underground house, so.
Yeah, they have. High-speed station, that we had, we, they, they, they launched it there, they did averages instead of words, and, you know, they do it out there, it's better than what we're doing. Uh, but, uh, and, yeah, so we're still keeping on that stuff, the high-speed rail too, you know, it's a state issue, but, uh, you know, Mike's been, you know, thinks it's a big, big doggle, you know, and I figure when he comes on now, we have, we're looking for target targets, and, and, uh, lots of, I understand, some concerns here. And you get a lot, you've got a lot of outside pressures, and people just trying to, uh, put upon your community, your, that's. It's like, they're trying to do whatever they can to, you know, spread rumors.
Well, you know, there's something else that they go and tell, we thought we had a vote getting together, after, we decided after the March election to ask, uh, both Congressman, um.
Now it's Congressman Garcia.
And, and his opponent, Ms. Smith, if they want to, see, acting town council has, has to be apolitical, completely apolitical. So when it was a party of, like, 50 people, or our many were in that fight, we just couldn't have ones or twos, we had to have everybody. Now it's down to, so we, as a community, or town council, voted to have, have a forum in which, uh, the congressman could come. And, and his opponent, Ms. Smith, if they want to, see, active town council has, has to be apolitical, completely apolitical, so when it was a party of like fifty people, our aldermen were in that fight, you know, we just couldn't have one to choose, we had to have everybody, now it's down to two, so we, as a community, or town council, voted to have, have a forum in which the Congressman could come, and Ms. Smith could come, either together, or separately, debate, not debate, just meet the community, hear our concerns, answer our questions, and so, we would still like to do that, I'm familiar with, because it's still an election, right?
Yeah, remember, it's still election, and obviously too, when you can ask us to do stuff, as your Congress, you know, as your representative in Congress too, right, so, and you were mentioning, as far as like wanting to get more, some more people making comments to Barker and stuff about the generators issue, I'll take that back to Mike, and see if you can, you know, if you can mention that to...
Well, Supervisor Barker did the right thing, as far as I can tell, on this decarbonization, and I'm not taking a position on whether it's good or bad, I'm not taking a position on climate change, and it's just, Public Works wanted to wait and study it, it's gonna take a couple of years, and then, Mr. Chief Sustainability Officer said, oh, I don't think so, good area, so.
Yeah, so all that stuff, good, and if there's things, if you guys want, you know, I tried to write down as much stuff as I could have on here, but I got a tiny brain, so...
Well, I have something, it's, it's related to FCC system, hold on, that's, I know that there's Connecting America Base Fund, there's Connecting America Base Tunes for the rural community water, and one of the things that we have, a big problem, we're not, so, you know, there's kind of a, our problem, and I believe, I think, uh, we need a local, uh, we, we need somebody in the governmental, official government authority, uh, to request a partner to get those funds allocated, and we think we're a great candidate for that, uh, in being how smart we are, but I, I've personally tried to contact Spectrum, because I've been doing my Shannon Valley wirework, and, uh, it's in the area we live in, and it's just astronomical, to go over there to ask guys, and if there are funds available, we would love to, to get that in here, and I think that would make a big difference, especially now, because we seem so good, people working from home, and that's been a real problem for a lot of people in this community because of the lockdown.
What, what was Andrew's argument?
And another problem on that, though, is when they do support these towers, a lot of times, ATVs done this, and their first, first net, they will get the tower in, and then they just sell the space, and they don't put their own things up, so they still don't get the first, to me, you know, that has happened time and again, housing out, and, and so, we just need, we, we're doing what we're supposed to do, but then they, they can switch and do something different, so...
Yeah, it's also a little ridiculous to be here that they don't have generators at the towers out here, I mean, and the other thing, I mean, I used to work at, I'd rent a generator, we rented those companies all the time, I don't see why a pair of them, during fire season, like to...
You sound like one of us.
Yeah.
Do you want me to bring one up there?
It's, and I, I know they've done it for other cell towers, so...
I think it's just, they won't, they won't, we're just small and incorporated, we don't have a city council, we don't, you know, we're not a volunteer, and they just can ignore us, no, they do, so...
The major problem we have is, none of this PSBS should have been activated until they found that, yes, the cell towers are sustainable about power, yes, people can pump water, yes, people, you know, we, they saw these problems, and then it should have been called back.
Look, that's it, that's their risk assessment matrix, is just not including the right things, right?
Or not even... Well, it's, it's, it's only affecting eight thousand people, that's, that's the reason, we can turn off eight thousand people, it's not bad, but, okay, I, I appreciate taking...
Yeah, no, and then the, the last thing is that the offices, you know, obviously, we didn't have to like build the airplane as we're taking off, because there's like a bunch of backlog of things, and getting the offices open, we didn't have normal transition time after this special election, but the offices are open, uh, the website is up too, so if you have, you know, any nails, or any calls in the offices, just go to mikegarcia.house.gov, all the contact information is there, uh, we're getting, still getting, uh, more caseworkers loaded in, but, uh, we're answering community requests, and, you know, we have things from, you know, town council, we want us to pay attention to as well, and call as well.
I appreciate it, thank you, thank you.
All right.